Good evening. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Council Member Scott Morgan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Morgan. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the 2010th Regular Meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved that the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, February 24, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Scheel?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. And we have all seven members of council in attendance. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on January 27, 2025. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
We got support. Maker motion is Vice President and Councilman Budzinski on the support. Do we have any, anything further grade of the word on the minutes from council? Anything from the audience on the minutes? Are you waiting? Okay, so on the minutes. With that being said, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Vice, or President McCullough?
Aye. And the minutes carry seven to zero. We're going to jump right into audience communication. We've set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please make your way to a podium. You'll have three minutes. Name and address for the record. Mr. Martin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Christopher Martin. Great state of Michigan. You might have to extend my time on this one. It's a pretty good story. But this is one of those stories where history repeats itself. This is back in July of 2023, and this involves a guy in a wheelchair who was on Five Mile, around the Harrison area. And there was a nurse out there trying to get this wheelchair-bound patient out of the road and back to the Majestic Care Senior Complex, as on the north side, if some of you know, might know where that's at. So in doing that, back in July of 2023, that happened to be during the day. Weather was nice, middle of the day. And the nurse was struggling with him evidently. The guy was fighting a little bit. And she was run over by a woman in her 80s who tried to, never says she hit her brakes, it says she tried to swerve around the wheelchair, and she ended up hitting the nurse, killing her. And the only thing that stopped that woman in her 80s was that she struck two other cars. Okay? Now, that's history. Well, let me tell you what happened last Thursday. This is getting around dusk, okay? And there's a heavyset guy in a wheelchair in the left turn lane, once again, Five Mile and Harrison, probably from the same complex. So I pulled off to the side, see how, you know, what was going on with the guy, and he wasn't dressed for the winter occasion of being outside. So heavyset guy, he still had both his legs, but he was big, big white guy. And big beer belly hanging out that he'd occasionally rub, so he didn't have a, a warm jacket on, let's say, okay? So then there was a guy on the south side, where there's a strip mall, proceeded to go out into the road to try to get this guy off the road. The guy wanted nothing to do with it in the wheelchair. So the guy gave up and went back. At that point, I figured I'd call the police. Call the police, get, I guess, the dispatcher, I guess, young female, tell by her voice, and told her what was, so there's a guy in a wheelchair out in the middle of Five Mile here, Five and Harrison. And she goes, what? And I said, yeah, it's hard to believe, but that's what he's doing, okay? And--
One minute left.
Well, you might have to extend it.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, keep going, keep going.
Okay. Okay. So I said, you might have to, might have to send a car out.
That's time. Would anybody want to make a motion to extend minutes? I'll open it up to council.
This is pretty important.
I make a motion to extend.
So make an extend. How many minutes would you--
I need another minute, I'll be all done.
I'll give you two just to make sure.
Good.
We have support councils. Is there any other comments? Audience comment? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote to extend Mr. Martin two minutes?
Wait, Mr. President?
Yes.
Is this for one minute or two minutes?
Two minutes. Is that still fine to the motion makers? It's pretty much a not to exceed. I just would like to hear if that's okay with you. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Two minutes.
Okay, here we go. So to continue with this, then I stated that I called the police station and then waited for a car to come on out. In the meantime, I thought, well, somebody's going to run into this guy. And whatever. And so I proceeded then to pull around and faced him with my car and the bright lights on in the turn lane. And at that point then, although his legs were not really functioning too well, he proceeded to flail his legs enough to get himself eventually out of the road. Now, he's out of the road to the north side, but he's in a driveway for the strip mall on the north side of Five Mile, around the Harrison, west of Harrison. So anyway, he gets out, so I get out of the road, so I don't, you know, get struck. And police comes by on Five Mile, and they head, they're heading west and do a U-turn, okay? Because the guy's out of the road now, but he's still there. Do a U-turn and head back towards Inkster Road. And at that point, I figured, well, let's, let's see, maybe there's an emergency. So anyway, turn north on Inkster Road, then turned onto Schoolcraft. Didn't look like he was in, like some bank was being robbed or something. But here's, here's the point I'm trying to make. Somebody needs to go over and talk to the people at that senior complex, and that's Majestic Care on the north side. And I'd like, if it's okay, we can take a vote on it here, but I'd like Mr. Fisher and the police chief to go over and maybe sit down and have a talk with who's ever supposed to be in charge. Because there's already been a nurse killed out there trying to do the same thing of getting someone out of the road who's in a wheelchair.
Mr. Martin, that's time. No, I appreciate it--
So think about it.
Yeah, absolutely. And then in worst case, we're going to make sure that we get information, and I know we've got our chief of staff in the audience. We're going to get some answers on it.
But let's resolve it.
Appreciate it, Mr. Martin. All right. Mr. Buati. I'm not trying to steal your thunder.
No, no.
Name and address for the record. You've got three minutes.
Drew Buati, 36298 Gardinella, Livonia, Michigan. I am here representing the Afternoon Rotary Club of Livonia. We wanted to spread some appreciation around the city of Livonia for Valentine's Day. A group of Rotarians spent a Saturday afternoon making these Valentine Day hot chocolate cups to distribute them and pass them around the great city of Livonia. Over 90 of them were made. We passed them out this past Saturday with different Rotarians at places such as the rec center, the library, the police station, and the post office. So we decided to give the rest to City Hall and City Council. We wanted to thank each of you for everything you guys do in this great city. To all out in the community, the Rotary Club meets at noon every Monday at Senate Coney Island on Plymouth Road. All are welcomed. Our very own council president, Brandon McCullough, is a proud Rotarian.
Amazing.
So--
I didn't pay him anything, guys.
Thank you all, and Happy Valentine's Day. Where would you like me to put these? I have a box of them.
Um, we'll grab the box. Pop them right there. I'll see between meetings.
Sounds good. Excellent. Thank you.
Drew, thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great club. Filled with a lot of cool people. Good evening, sir. Name and address, three minutes.
Hi, my name is Randy Gill. I live at 37204 Breton in Livonia. And I'm here because of the potential liability of the former Rite Aid building on Seven Mile and Eight Mile in Newburgh. In the minutes, then, Mr. Alex Sewinski, he was a Sheets representative, and he said that the soil samples there are quite bad, and the, the Rite Aid building is even condemned and needs repair. Well, I'd like to see the city go in there and check everything out. I mean, the owner of the, the lot or the building should be responsible for it. So I hope somebody from the city would go over there and check it out. Phase two of the waterway going from Farmington Hills into Greenmead, there's also the waterway behind the Rite Aid building. And over a course of the winter and the summer, it expands and contracts. So I'd like to, for everybody, get some soil samples and check it out. And this way, we would know if it's condemned, tear it down, okay? Let's hold them accountable, okay? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr.--
Yes.
You may want to also direct that to State of Michigan, one of our, either state reps, state senator, so that they can contact, you know, the DNR, DQ on that site and on that waterway. Yeah. If they haven't already, I don't know.
That's a great observation. Good evening. Name and address, three minutes.
Greg Ralco, 36116 Fairway Drive. Just on that same point, Sheets on two occasions, it's in the minutes, both the Planning Commission and City Council, said that the building is essentially falling down. Okay, so two things. If, if in fact that's true, we can't ignore it. We have to go over and check it out. And, and if it isn't true, then we should be happy that we didn't do business with Sheets, because they're not reputable. They lie to, to tell you anything to get your vote. I had a couple of things tonight. I wanted to thank the city for its use of the rezoning signs. This was the only way we were made aware of the proposal on Ayton-Newburgh. I drive past, my office is in Farmington Hills, I drive past the Genopolis site, and there was never any notice on that site. So these are the kinds of things that go under the radar, and, and they need to be full out in, in front of everybody so that they can comment and, and come to the meetings and understand what's happening. So I want to commend the city for that, that practice, and I think you need to keep that up. As a postmortem to the Sheets proposal, three things came up. Ron covered the first one, but like I said, we need to find out what, what, what Sheets knows that we don't know and look into it. Secondly, I'd like to see an ordinance passed to prevent the opening of new gas stations in Livonia. The last gas station built in Livonia was in 2013, the Kroger gas station on Eight Mile. There hasn't been a new gas station in the last 12 years because the current population is down almost 16% from its high watermark 40 years ago, when most of the gas stations in town were open because there was simply a demand at that time. So the demand and the need for new gas stations is shrinking and has been shrinking for a long time. And we can be honest, Kroger only opened because it's out in front of their Kroger store. While we were formulating our opposition to the Sheets proposal, I made a FOIA request of Farmington Hills and was able to obtain some, some primary research they did in regarding the number of gas stations per square mile statistics versus comparable cities in Metro Detroit. Farmington Hills had 1.14 per square mile. Livonia has .58, and there are six cities behind Livonia, Troy, Canton, Farmington Hills, Novi, West, West Bloomfield, that have less concentration than Livonia has. So it's a statistical thing that we should look at. It's, it's, the facts don't lie. And then if you add the number of gas stations on the opposite side of the border streets of Livonia, the east side, the east of Redford Township side of Inkster, for example, you'll find another 16 gas stations. Therefore, the ratio for Livonia is actually 1.03 per square mile. And once again, that would put a second next to--
That's time.
--next to Farmington.
I appreciate it, though. Those are some good statistics.
So I think those are the things that you probably need to look into. But if that building's unsafe, we need to check it out.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record. You've got three minutes.
Mary Moon, 28904 Broadmoor Street in Livonia. So any competent builder can build a lovely building, a lovely house, but we know that it's people that make that house a home. I'm here this evening to advocate for the seniors who currently use the senior center. My name is Mary Moon, born and raised in Livonia, graduated from Bentley High School in 1973, and I am currently a senior who uses the senior center multiple times a week. The seniors have got a lot to say, and nobody's asked them what they think. So because of time, I'm going to talk about two things. I have lists and lists and lists, but I'll talk about two things. First of all, when you walk into the senior center currently, it's kind of like a hotel lobby. It's carpeted, it's got a nice wooden desk, there are lovely ladies that sit behind it and chat with us in the morning. There is a couch, there's armchairs that are in a semicircle around a lovely fireplace. It's a great place in the middle of winter to get out of the house and grab a book and curl up in front of a fireplace and read, or knit, or talk to people. It's welcoming, it's warm, it's homey. One out of three seniors in America claim that isolation and loneliness are an issue in their lives. I think a priority needs to be made as they are figuring out what they're going to do with the inside of that senior center to make it warm and inviting and encourage people to come out. The second thing is cost. We have no information, so here's what we're thinking. It's currently free, the membership at the senior center. We are seniors, we live on small fixed incomes. Where we spend our money is a big decision. If I want to take Marcia's aerobic class on Friday, I walk up to the front desk and they give me a nice little punch card. 10 classes, 10 bucks, a dollar a class. Roy's classes on Wednesdays are a little over $2. It's a pretty good deal, such a good deal that I do both of them. And the punch cards are key, because if, the punch, the punch card only gets punched if you go to the class. If you have to miss a class, you aren't penalized for that. You still have all the rest of the classes. It's important. We also get to go to one class free so we can find out if we like the teacher and can keep up with them before we make a decision to buy the punch card. The seniors have got so much to say. I have pages of notes, and no one has asked them. So who you building this nice house for? I would welcome the opportunity to talk to anyone who's willing to hear what the seniors have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to open up the council communication. I'm going to go to Councilman Donavick, Councilman Toy, everybody, pretty much everybody. Councilman Morgan?
Pretty much everybody. Thank you, Mr. President. Two things, one on a serious note and then one on a personal note. To the resident asking questions about the senior center, myself and Councilman Laura Toy worked on that committee, and then, of course, all the council members had large parts to do with the senior center construction. Ironically, we were just talking about the costs. On Wednesday, we had a Capitol Outlay Infrastructure Meeting, and we received an update from our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Davis, and from the administration. And the focus of that conversation was primarily on the costs. As of right now, that is on budget, and there's a potential savings there. Now, of course, you work in construction, you know that there is contingencies and all sorts of things baked into that, but as of right now, it seems like we're on schedule and, and under budget, which are two things that this council is really excited about. And, and I will continue to press on the administration to keep that under budget, not to come up with some sort of creative financing way to go spend those dollars somewhere else. This is the project, the city council worked tirelessly on it, and let's see that come underneath budget and get some savings. But most importantly, we're building a really great project. There was a survey with north of 600 senior citizens that participated, and I think the actual survey pool was much larger, but of that pool, I believe there were 600 seniors that participated in that, along with Councilman Toy. On the committee was made up of the Aging Commissioners. There was a number of senior citizens from that commission that were participating, and then the senior center staff, as many of this community know, which they're very, very, very involved, the senior center, and it was important to hear their input. So there's a ton of input on the senior center. I'm excited for it. I'm only 33, so I'm not using it just yet, but sometimes I do go there with Councilman Toy, and we visit together. So I'm excited. I'm excited for when I get to use it full-time. I'm thinking about the seniors of today, but I'm also thinking about the seniors when I'm a senior in, in a few years. So I know you can't make everybody happy, and there's absolutely concerns. I know Councilman Budzinski had a, had a coffee hours, and there was a lot of people there, and she was nice enough to have me as her guest, and we talked about the senior center. And there's been so much discussion about the size of the elevator, being able to add 25 people on one elevator. I mean, we can go on and on and on about those conversations, which are important conversations, but we have had those. And that information is also available on the website, costs and renderings, and it's a living document. Things are going to change throughout construction, but I am proud of the administration on that, and, and there's a lot of input from seniors and, and different stakeholders. And then also on a personal note, my girlfriend always makes fun of me because I'm on the city council, and we look at very serious stuff. Well, tonight, she had her own city council meeting in West Bloomfield, and before the meeting, I was watching her on TV, and she did a good job. So if you're watching this city council meeting, you weren't as good as some of my colleagues, but you did a really good job. And so I'm proud of you, and, and good job in your first city council meeting. Thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate, you always give your wife shout-outs, so very good my girlfriend shout-out.
That was wonderful. Listen, up until the time I met her, I didn't think she was real, so. Look at that. Yes. Councilman Toy. Or no.
I don't know if I can follow that, I really don't. You know, a couple of things have come up tonight that I, I had my notes that I did want to talk to, and that was what a couple of the gentlemen brought up, Ron and Greg, about gas limits and gas stations. I, I'd like to refer that whole topic to Committee of the Whole, just to discuss it for the council.
We got support?
Not saying it should be or shouldn't be, but I think it behooves us, yes, that's a motion.
Support.
Okay, thank you for taking the discussion.
The floor is yours.
Basically, to take a look at what's doing. They went beyond some of these areas to auto shops and this, that, the other thing, and I believe in free enterprise. You know, I'm a business owner, I get it. But I think, you know, the time has come. Our population used to be, you know, well over 100,000, which meant we got a ton of money, not a ton, but a lot of money from different entities. We're down to 92,000 people.
Yeah.
So, you know, things are changing, ways we do, things are changing. You guys know technology a heck of a lot better than I do. I can't even get this computer to work tonight, or iPad, whatever they call them. And so subsequently, I, I think it would behooves us just to take a look at it, what other cities are doing, not only in our area but across the country. And it's not only--
Yeah, no.
--you know, gas stations, it's other things.
You have a committee in mind?
I want to get ahead of it.
Any--
Committee of the Whole, yeah.
So Committee of the Whole. Anything else from council before I go to the vote? Anything from the audience to put this subject matter into Committee of the Whole? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, just to, if I may continue just on one last subject, and that is about seniors. I am of that ripe old age, and I did go to Bentley High School. I'm a little older than you are, not much, but a little. So I can understand some of the aches and pains lately, and the arthritis and all the good stuff, and I know all the good things Marcia does, and I'd be happy to talk to you anytime, Ms. Spoons. And if you want to come to one of our committee meetings, I'm hoping that we look, look at the Newburgh site, everyone. I wanted to do that like three years ago when Brandy was here, because we're, we're going to dedicate some dollars over there. And I'd like to see what we're really doing with that before we go jumping in, you know, those kinds of housing that we currently are doing. I think today's senior, if I may, and I'm not speaking for everyone, but they want a different kind of venue of things, and I realize the city can only provide so much, but we really need to get a focus group on that of seniors. Ms. Spoons might want to be on that. If we can go in those directions and get the real deal. That's what I did when I did human trafficking. I brought in the, the women from the streets and from the pole dancing and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, you know, you got to get the real feel of it, not just read it in a book or hear it, you know, wherever. And I know some of you are laughing, but unfortunately, that topic is, is pretty gruesome. So all I'm saying is seniors are a lot easier, in some cases. But we, we really need to focus in our seniors, because no offense, our, our average population is over 55 here, right? And unless we, I guess, consider that we need more people making children and things like that, I won't go there. Anyhow, so, sorry, I, I don't mean to go on, but you know what I'm trying to say to you. And, yeah, these guys are blushing, so I will shut up now and make a motion that we look at the Newburgh site and our senior needs in, if you wouldn't mind, my senior committee.
So we have support? All right. Yes.
So if I understand that correctly, Councilman Toy, you're asking for the Senior Citizen Families and Environment Committee--
Yes.
--to place the Newburgh Village, construction of the new Newburgh Village item in your committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll support that. Yep.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote to send the subject matter into the, what was it, the Senior Citizen--
Committee.
Yep.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I promised to make the committee fun.
I'd have no doubt.
You have no doubt, I know.
No doubt. I'm excited.
All right. Cool. Thanks.
All right. Councilman Morgan?
Yes, so I just want to announce the 2025 January retirees from the city of Livonia. Judge Kathleen McCann, 16th District Court Judge with 30 years of service, congratulations on her retirement. Kathleen Martin, Police Dispatcher with 28 years and three months of service. Josh Gilbert, Captain from the Police Department, 28 years and three months of service. Thank you for your service, all of you.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Councilman Budzinski?
Thank you.[1689.54]
I'm going to circle back to the Senior Center real quickly. I'm just to kind of address a couple of things. First, for any of seniors in particular who have questions or concerns or suggestions about things that are happening at the Senior Center, our Parks and Recreation Director Ted Davis hosts monthly TED Talks. His next one is actually tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. So if anyone wants to talk to our director about the plans for the future Senior Center, they can attend that meeting and ask questions there. We also have livoniabuilt.org, which is a website that has renderings and information about the Senior Center under construction. Just a quick overview, the entry is beautiful. There is a fireplace and seating and a welcome desk for folks. There are some really cool amenities, including maker spaces, meeting spaces, dining, library, cafe area. So some really beautiful, updated renderings, in fact, that we went over at our Capitol Outlay Infrastructure Committee last Wednesday. So if anyone was interested, I also, if you're watching on YouTube, I tried to drop it in the comment section so people could find it easily. Other talks, I have my monthly coffee hour on Saturday. I host it at the Civic Center Library at 11 o'clock. I often have guests. This month, it's Chief Grawski. We're going to be talking about public safety here in Livonia. Coffee hours are open to anyone. I provide a general council update. He will be talking about public safety in Livonia and we will both take questions if you have them. Also, last month, just a heads up, the food distribution program was a talk of Facebook because I had to reschedule the date. So I just wanted to remind people that, one, if you are in need of food, you can go to the Livonia Housing Commission next Tuesday, February 18th, from 12 to 2 p.m. and they distribute boxes. You don't have to sign up for anything. It's for those who need it and you can just drive in and they'll provide you with the resources that you need. And then also, I just learned today that our Parks and Recreation Director will also be talking to the community about improvement plans for Sheldon Park at Rosedale Church at 6:30 on Thursday. This was in response to another public comment a few, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, with questions related to that. So that is also a public meeting if folks want to go and ask questions. You know, a great opportunity to do so. Another thing I just wanted to take a minute and touch on is Noble, the Noble Building. We recently received an update from the administration and they are advising against actions to improve the building, given the age, history and current lack of activity. I find this response really disappointing. And so I just wanted to make a public statement about it because this is a topic that I've, I feel very passionately about. I think that it's important to have city services available on the south side of town because of the separation between the industrial area and the freeway, the lack of walk and bike ability connecting the south part of town to the civic center area. And most importantly, it's not just something that I think is of value. A lot of residents have expressed that this is important to them as well. And the city, I feel, has an obligation to maintain its infrastructure and its buildings because those are taxpayer investments. Now, the administration has shared that Noble, a white box repair of the building would be $5.5 million, an estimate provided by OHM in 2023. And it's often referenced as a nonstarter for a conversation about what the future of this building holds because it's too expensive and we don't have the money for that project. And while I can appreciate that there is not $5.5 million sitting anywhere in our budget for this building, this is clearly a priority to a lot of residents here in Livonia. And so I think it merits a real conversation. It's also been, you know, I personally expressed it as an interest. Other members of council have, in varying degrees, also expressed interest in this site. And the mayor's stated priority is the city center. Pants on Fire Speed for Development of Five and Farmington. And that at one time was a dream with a large price tag, too. But the city took the time and the effort to develop Livonia Vision 21 in 2018 and it wasn't acted on immediately. The Plymouth Road Corridor is Priority Project Number Three in Vision 21 Strategic Plan Development Book. And I respect and appreciate the administration's, you know, commitment to taking on launch projects, the Senior Center being one of them, Newburgh Village Two being another, a bond for a new city hall and now a millage to further develop this site, but also provide much needed updates and support for our public safety. But to let this building rot, to me, it's just, it's unacceptable. You know, taking care of our neighborhoods and planning for the future of our city center are not mutually exclusive. We've done Green Me 365 for strategic planning. The library's done strategic planning. We're currently doing city center surveys in the community as well. There can be public discourse and planning for what happens at the Noble site without taking away from the other things that we're doing here in Livonia. We already know that there are plans for Sheldon Park. Again, there's this meeting on Thursday for further discussion. I'll be honest, I actually have plans with my family that night, but I will probably cancel those plans so that I can go to the meeting because I really think that that is how important this area of our community is. And, you know, given the fact that Noble was decommissioned, you know, I really have my own questions about why a plan was designed for Sheldon that didn't include the Noble Building or the property that it's on because it's not just a building, but it's also green space. So a question that I'll be asking or hoping to find answers to on Thursday is what are the plans for the Noble Building? I think it's beyond time that we receive some clear answers from the administration since it's clear that they don't think that the building is worth investing in. What is going to happen to it? What is the timeline for that? And how does that relate to what is being planned for Sheldon Park?
Thank you, Councilwoman Buzinski. Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleague, Councilwoman Buzinski. The two of us disagree on this issue, but I do respect your opinion. And I very much believe that she's going to tell her husband and kids that they're canceling their Thursday plans to go to this meeting. If you know Councilwoman Buzinski, she puts the city in her work at the front end of a lot of what she does in the community and in her family life. And I appreciate that. There was a number referenced, $5.5 million to renovate the existing building and make the necessary site improvements to make the building fit for occupancy. We did receive that estimate, that report in 2023 from OHM. However, that is a little misleading because there's a lot more work that goes into that estimate. And that, again, was in 2023. And there's going to be a lot more things to include like interior finishes, loose finishes, equipment replacing, walkways and various other things. So I just want to put things in perspective that that number is going to quickly turn into a much larger number. And the city only has so much money. That building no longer is a library. The library commissioned, decommissioned it. I've recently had the pleasure of touring a lot of various libraries in Metro Detroit, Michigan. And, you know, Livonia is a big community, small community, small town, big community feel. You can go to any point of our community and be at City Hall within 10 minutes. So I personally, as one council member, don't think that we need three libraries in our community. The Noble Building has always been a point of contention amongst city politics as far back as the 90s. City officials have been talking about it. This building was rendered functionally obsolete. It was rendered dangerous by building officials. It's got a basement. If we were to build a municipal building today, we would not be building basements, especially on a site that has a high water table. Today, if we're going to be building a new building, the first thing we'd be doing is soil borings and finding out just how high that water table is. And at this site, it's high because the basement's always full of water. You've got a boiler system down there. You've got hot water tanks down there. You've got a whole list of mechanical equipment that's down there that costs millions of dollars. And you've also got to wonder the structural integrity of that block foundation and the issues that come with it. So I can go on and on about the difficulties of the site and the realities of the site. I'm sympathetic and I appreciate the historical value of that site. I appreciate the memories that people have made at this site. I, too, have made memories at the site as a kid growing up around here. But as a city official, I have to make tough decisions and decisions that usually are related to fiscal decisions. I have to look at the fact that we don't just have infinite amount of money. I've often said that if people are so passionate about that specific building in that area, understand me so, do we all of a sudden want to impose some sort of tax just to bring that building up to muster? I think that's unrealistic to impose that sort of special assessment in residents in that neighborhood. Some communities may do that. I don't think that's the fiscally responsible thing to do. So the next question is where do we get that money? You can apply for grants maybe, but I know administration has looked at that and it's been very difficult. I know that there are resident-led groups that have looked into getting money and finding funds to develop that. And that has not gone very far because the reality is, as anyone that's involved in construction knows, that site will be very, very expensive to rehab. And then you start to ask yourself if that building is too big for its needs. So with that being said, I just want to bring some balance here and know that I'm very passionate about it. I know a list of city officials that are passionate about it, but it's not that cut and dry. It's not just putting $5 million in the building and fixing it. It goes a lot deeper than that. So I would love to see the city council finally do what we need to do and take a vote and just, and either demo the building or not demo the building. And I don't know if that's ever going to happen during my time, but I've been on city councils since 2019. And to my respected colleague's position or point is we keep talking about it, but nothing ever happens. And that's been the same going on for decades. And hopefully, that's not the case moving on for the next decade. But this is nothing new and we kind of go over this every few months or every couple of years. And we just kind of spin our wheels, as some of us like to say. So I hope we do do something. Of course, you know my position on what that something may be, but looking forward to the future, what that site looks like. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donavick. All right, is everybody good? I'm going to, I just want to touch base a little bit out of this. And then before I kind of get into that, I did want to say, actually, I'm going to get into this first because there were some new data, should we say. So we did get a, we did get a memo. And I kind of want to, you know, to jump on what Councilwoman Buzinski brought up. It's still the same, it's still the same, the same approach to it. You know, hey, we had OHM. Here's the difference. Just as if you're going to buy your house, you're going to hire a professional home inspection company. And let me ask, I mean, you obviously can't answer this, but if I had a home inspection that just said, everything looks good and that's about it, I'm not probably going to take that very seriously. And so basically, in that, there was no, any analytics. There was no specifics. There was no lead-based paint test. There was no structural assessment. We don't know. These are all findings and opinions. Someone could say that, right here, bless you.
Bless you.
DPW, this is, I'm going to read it right off the memo. Obtaining an estimate to address water intrusion issues. From anybody that's told me that that building has been leaking since it was built. And if anybody has been in that basement, which I have, there literally is a bleeder made out of PVC bringing water from the outside of the drain tiles into the building through a drain so it can go out a combination sewer. So anybody that knows that, that had been in place probably for the last 20, 30 years as a makeshift repair. At the end of the day, just anybody knows in building, you know, water tables and when the building's there, sure, it could have a high water table, but what about hydrostatic pressure? When you build a basement or a new home, no matter what, you have hydrostatic pressure. And over those years, the hydrostatic pressure comes down. That building's been there since the 60s. And you know what? A little bit of drain tile around the perimeter and digging it up, will fix it. You know, what's the cost in that? I can't say. I'm not going to get into a debate on how much, but I keep hearing these multiple $5 to $10 million. Right now, if anybody does this, these are facts that I'm going to be giving you. Right now, I'm building a municipal complex in Northville Township at $470 a square foot, all in, brand new. It's all new. That's including civil, that's including site work, that's including fixtures, furnishes and equipment, which is all the stuff that goes into the building. That includes any carrying costs or contingency. That's all in. So I, being very conservative, Noble 16,000 square feet. While we might have some civil work that needs to be done with it, let's just talk about the building footprint, 16,000 square foot. And even if I throw a $200 a square foot, which is at the lower level of a new construction, you're still at 3.2 million and that's on the high end. Some of these rehab costs go all as low as $60 a square foot. I'm not saying that that's how much it's going to cost. So I'm just going to say this. We had a meeting last week where we were discussing Five and Farmington. I wasn't planning on bringing that up, but there is talks on some of the reenduration, some of the plans going forward. We looked at three of them. One of them calls for tearing down the Bob Bennett Library and relocating it. Okay? So if we're sitting here talking about fiscal responsibilities after we dumped all this money into it, then what is $20,000 when we're paying all these people and, you know, engineers, architects, all of this for that? So I'm just going to say right now, you know, this, I don't want to keep kicking this down. And for that, I'm going to go on the record and state that until we have an idea on the 36 square miles in this city, I am not going to even consider about a Five and Farmington development. You know, I might be one of seven and that might be a no vote. But you know what? I made a post and how many people, if I had a dollar for everybody that told me, man, there's more to this city than Five and Farmington. And I go to them and I say, listen, I know we need developments. We do need to do better on our city hall. Everybody can see this, I'll make that debate. However, this city is 36 square miles. We still have Sears that is a sitting vacant. We still have empty businesses on the Plymouth Road Corridor. If I keep hearing about chicken joints and car washes, even though I'm approving them, I get it, it's kind of a hypothetical thing and I might sound like a hypocrite, but we got work to do. And so, listen, if we're going to put a blind eye to both Noble and even Sandberg and other facilities, well, then I'm not going to support anything that just focuses on one area. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind my council colleagues that if you want to put money into Noble, then make a motion. We have the right to make motions. If you want to put money into some sort of study, even though there's been countless studies and we've gone down this path multiple times, make a motion. Put the motion on the floor and ask for some sort of study or hire some vendor to do the inspection or additional work that someone wants to do. And if it's got four votes, it's got four votes. So the council has that opportunity. And if they'd like to do something, they can. I know there's been some discussion about the Five Mile and Farmington project. I'm excited about the development of Five Mile and Farmington because as long as I can remember, we've always talked about it downtown Livonia. And if you know government, government takes a long time to do anything, as it should, because you're dealing with the people's money, taxpayer dollars. And there has to be a lot of due diligence and a lot of legal hurdles and a lot of meetings. As my colleague, Mr. Morgan, likes to say, we have meetings after meetings after meetings after meetings. And that's just how government operates. And for a large part of that, I agree with. Because again, you have to be fiscal stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And as you see the Five Mile and Farmington project evolve, we've had, I think we're going to talk about a little bit tonight, pretty quickly here, the Committee of the Whole meeting. I think we've had 14 public meetings on that. And there's been a lot of great discussion. There's going to continue to be great discussion about that. But one thing you look at, renderings, if you work in construction, is their renderings, their evolving documents, their living documents. And we hire smart people and they put together these renderings and different options. And so far, the administration, so far, and I hope they continue this, have done a good job with including the city council and having us be a part of that conversation. I appreciate when the administration works with the legislative branch. They don't have to. The administration does not have to include the city council, does not have to do all these meetings with us. Now, they should because we ultimately are going to be voting to approve or not approve an item. But I want to work in a collaborative way with the administration, with the decision makers. I want a seat at the table. I want to participate. I want to mold something from the very beginning as opposed to being a part of it in the ninth hour. So so far, the city council has been very involved in this project and it's come up now, so I want to talk about it. And I hope that we continue to be involved in that project because it is important for the council input. Each one of these council members has varying degrees of experiences, different perspectives on things. And I think it's important that we continue to work in that collaborative way. I'm not going to take renderings and share it with people and post pictures of it and participate in a whisper campaign. That's not how I operate. I like to operate in a collaborative way with my colleagues and respect my colleagues and respect the smart people that we hire to look at these individual things. And ultimately, the residents will benefit when seven council members are participating in varying degrees. And whether we get the projects, we don't, I don't know. It's far, far too early to see if that project's going to happen yet. But as long as I can remember, we've always talked about Five and Farmington or downtown in our city. The city's very unique and fortunate that we own 27 acres. The city controls that land. We don't control Sears, we don't control private development, private buildings, but we do control 27, 28 acres here. we do control 27, 28 acres here. So, I'm hoping that we can do something so that when I have kids and, and our future grows, we can go from 92,000 or 93,000 residents to 100,000 and so on. And I think a downtown sort of development, civic-centered development will help us reach that goal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Just to touch base, I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Bozinski after this. Listen, there's council resolution 354-24, passing $20,000 to provide us with $5,000 for a structural assessment, $5,000 for maintenance carrying costs, just to put any patches, and $10,000 to create renderings that could help us get grants. That money has been passed and not spent by the administration. This is the, this is the letter that we got as a memo stating, "The long-term solution will require replacing the aging roof on the building and attempting to waterproof the basement walls. It is unlikely that the $20,000 the council has allocated per that council resolution for council initiatives related to Noble slash Sheldon Park issues would pay for either of these remedies." Nowhere ever on record or any of those minutes did I ask for $20,000 to fix anything in the building. I'm asking, just as we are, the stewards of, the money in this city is boring samples. My, my colleague brought up doing the due diligence. We haven't. If you want to believe an OHM report that says, "Hey, it's a bad building, it's not gonna work out," without any data, then feel free. But as someone sitting on council representing over 93,000 people in this city, I'm going to make sure that maybe a $5,000 structural assessment, that the building walls are not falling down, I'm gonna learn that before I make a decision that's going to impact millions of dollars. Design fees and engineering fees and architect fees, they're a lot more than everybody thinks in this room. 20 grand in that grand scheme of things is a, is a drop in the bucket. Not saying I want to spend it, but I think it's imperative to us to do those due diligence, because then we can have the answers. If that site comes back that that building is falling down and cannot be replaced, well, then maybe things will change, but we don't have that. We've had meetings out at the park, we've asked for the money, and it has not been spent. That's where we are. We haven't done soil borings out there. We haven't done soil borings even yet on our property that we're looking at Five and Farmington, areas that are deemed wetlands. We haven't looked at it. So, I'm sorry, I normally never get this loud, but I'm very passionate, and the worst thing I hate to do is kick things down the road. All right? So, yes, we made a motion to spend 20 grand, and right now, it says, "However, we advise against any of those proposals, given the age, history, and current lack of activity in the building." So, basically, we passed a resolution for 20 grand and we got a memo back that says, "Hey, refer to the same OHM report." That says, you know, that's not stamped or sealed. In engineering, for people that know that, you get a signed and stamped drawing that puts the accountability on the architect slash engineer. We don't have that. Okay? So, reading a memo from somebody that took a small tour of the building is not good, in my opinion. And I'm not making a decision based on that. Councilwoman Bozinski.
Yeah, and I, I feel like my statement has kind of been twisted in a way in which I was not advocating anything with the building. What I would like to know is what is the administration's plan for the building? As it was just quoted, "We advise against the proposals." I won't repeat what Council President just said. The administration clearly doesn't want to move forward in rehabbing this building. There's been a lack of engagement with residents on this building. The meeting that I mentioned on Thursday is really about Sheldon Park. I would like to know if Noble's included in that vision. Are we looking to demo the building and create green space? Are we looking to demo the building and build something new? And that is what the mayor had presented to the Library Commission many years ago. I don't know, and I just know that residents are frustrated by it. I hear it all the time. I'm frustrated by it. And so, my question is simply, what is the administration's plan and when are they prepared to share that plan with residents and the community? Sheldon Park did not get a new park sign because we were told that there are plans for updates to that park. Do those plans include Noble? If they don't include Noble, what is the plan for the Noble site? Again, I, I just want to know, what are the administration's plan? That is my question. I am, I hope and would like for them to pursue rehabilitation. But again, this administration has big vision. They have a lot of plans, and I think that is great. And I would just like to be included in what those plans are. I would like the community to be included in what those plans are, because we've waited a really long time, and I'm just tired of waiting, and I want clarity, so that everyone's on a level playing field and residents can stop feeling frustrated. Because if we do want to bring in the conversation of the city center, I know it's a point of contention. So, let's get some resolution and be clear about these other areas, so that we can focus on the future, so that we can go eyes wide open in what lays before us. And that is my request, and that is why I brought this up today.
Thank you. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, and I, and I, and I see the frustration, and I appreciate that from my colleagues. The one thing, I think we can all agree, City Hall, which is, should be the people's building, is crumbling. We have to do something about City Hall. We also, our, our police department and our fire department also deserve better, and that's something we were talking about with this, you know, city center project. We can't hold them hostage because we're upset about what's going on with Noble at the same time. We can focus on the city center, and you're gonna hear some of that in our Capitol Outlay reports in just a minute, and the remainder city, at the remainder of the city at the same time. Both can be true. It shouldn't be one or the other. We can focus on the city center, get that project done, and we can look at what the needs of our city are. I just don't want us to get into a game-playing or a hostage situation where we're not gonna support our public, you know, our first responders or the City Hall project, because we're frustrated about Noble. We need to take care of both at the same time. So, let's just be careful how we're approaching this, and really, that's just all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anything else from council? All right, I have the, I just want to at least bring us back to a more, more of the meeting. I did have something personal. My wife celebrated a birthday on January 31st. It's a belated, she's probably definitely not paying attention right now or watching. Hello, happy birthday, Casey. This counts, so. That was the palate cleanser for everybody in the audience. It's like, what's going on here? With that being said, we do have new data on items seven and 10, when we already touched base on the retirees. I don't see any reports from the mayor or any other officials. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and items one through six on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on January 27th and determined to be non-controversial.
So, move.
Support.
I got Toy and Sheil with the support. Council, do we have any questions, concerns, issues, anything? Audience, anything on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the consent passes seven to zero. I'm gonna now move on to unfinished business and its meetings of the committee. Item number seven is a committee of a whole meeting that we held on January 27th. The meeting, this was in reference to the subject matter petition 2024-10-02-16, submitted by the Livonia Gas Mart to redevelop and expand an existing gas station. We held this meeting, and it's kind of, just to kind of give a quick background on it, if you ever see us put something in the committee, it's basically because we want to potentially study it further and learn some more things about it. And with this, I want to thank the petitioner for being able to come up with a lot of information on this particular model, on this particular item. The committee meeting commenced at 6:06. I did show all members of council there. I introduced the item, gave history on it. Councilman Donovan did offer an approving motion with the following conditions, one being, "Provide a landscaping plan, an addition of bike racks, grass on the east side of the site plan, and ADA parking added." The committee, right now, this item will be out of committee as we're talking about it now, and right now, I am gonna go right to that item. Council, do we have direction?
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving.
Support.
We got approving and support. Councilman Donovan, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to petitioner. This is the gas station at the corner of Merriman Road on, what would that be, the southeast corner, maybe? The old, old Merriman and Plymouth Road. It's been there a long time, I think from maybe the 1950s, maybe the gas station first started, and it's in a, going under a much-needed renovation. They're adding in addition to it, there were some concerns about parking and ADA accessibility and bike racks and whatnot, so it's been great. Thank you, sir, for investing money in our community. Looking forward to seeing this existing gas station redeveloped into a really nice one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the item passes seven to zero. Thanks for joining us again. We're gonna move on to number eight is review of the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Meeting that took play, oh, actually, meetings that took place on both January 22nd, 2025, and February 5th, 2025. The subject matter of planning, design, and construction of the new Civic Center campus. Vice President, take it away.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of chairing this meeting that night. Other committee members present was, Mrs. Bozinski was there, and then Mrs. Sheil also joined us that evening, so that was nice of her. We also had the mayor, our city clerk, Eric Goldstein, our city, Assistant City Attorney, Dave Varga, Chief of Staff, Debbie Lichtenberg, our Finance Director, Mark Termina, our Planning and Economic Development Director, Todd Zalinsik, City Engineer, and then we had representatives from both Plant Moran Real Point and Plant Moran Technologies. So, this meeting began with the discussion of the IT contract, and then, of course, also where we're at with the master plan. Plant Moran Real Point representatives explained the IT contract and process to hire a separate outside tech company needed to design and consult on the project. It was posted and mitten. Five proposals were submitted and three firms were interviewed. Plant Moran Technologies was the recommended firm, offering a $384,500 contract to provide about $5 million in technology design for us. PMT was noted to be wholly separate from Plant Moran Real Point, so there is no, you know, conflict there, and we spoke about adaptability and growth of technology within the city. Councilmember Bozinski offered the approving motion for PMT to be awarded the contract. Next, representatives from Plant Moran Real Point spoke on the master plan process and timeline. Obviously, back in November of '24, we launched the master plan. January of '25, we did the site analysis and development program to prepare the framework, with studies completed for traffic, surveying, and environmental. April and May of this year, we are going to present the final master plan, they will present, sorry, to us, the final master plan, to include many interim meetings between now and then, and Mr. Donovan will speak about one of those in just a moment. They are currently working on the framework plan to consider City Hall as the anchor. A decision will be need, needed to be made on the layout that makes the most sense to align with Vision 21. A dynamic city center is the vision for this project, which is guided by Vision 21, consisting of the following key design strategies. We are looking for a new city center. We want great mixed use during this, designed to unlock the site's greatest assets, and we're gonna pave the way for future development at Five and Farmington. Many goals for the project were discussed. Some included a Livonia Community Green Connectors to allow for a bikeable, walkable area going all the way from Rotary Park to Heinz, going through city center with options for other types of transit. We looked at a welcoming city center with, of course, City Hall, Fire, and Police Departments, the library, plazas, and parks. Another goal is to provide experiential living with branded edges at Five and Farmington and the possibility of perhaps a culinary street or a merchant market in this area. Of course, everything is driven by budget, and with some important points to consider, all decisions must be feasible and sustainable. City Hall and the senior center, of course, are going to be the first important steps we take. We're looking to start small. This first phase has to end up being meaningful and economically viable. We would move the, of course, we're gonna have to move the current City Hall and Police Department buildings in order to rebuild them. There will be some clear rules and expectations throughout the process, and we're looking at some public financing tools as well. It's a 20-year phasing strategy that's probably going to need to be created for this development, and everyone hopefully will understand where we're headed in this. Site planning factors for City Hall. Well, developing an activated plan for the park and plaza that will be connected to City Hall. We want our City Hall to be welcoming to all people, to be flexible, to be sustainable. We're also looking to reduce the size of our City Hall by 40% from this current building. We think that's gonna be fiscally responsible and all we need. Focusing on healthy spaces, more daylight, effective resource management will be at the forefront. Our city plaza, we want it to have wide appeal, be community-first, the right size, acknowledge all the adjacencies that will go around it, be seasonally appropriate and durable and cost-effective. The meeting did adjourn at 8:17, and we recommended that the Law Department would draft an approving resolution for the IT contract, and also, this would all stay in committee for now. And I will let Mr. Donovan take it from there.
I think the proper thing would be put a motion for.
The IT one?
First, yeah.
Okay, so that's your motion, if you want to go with it?
Yeah, I will put forth the motion for the IT contract.
We got support? We got support on that?
Support.
There we go. Floor's yours.
Just a question. We talked about 384 and some change on that. What, loaded question. What is that gonna cover exactly?
So, Plant Moran, sorry.
No, no, you're good, you're good.
I just joked on that.
Oh, please do.
PMT or Plant Moran Technologies, they come in, they're the experts. So, they, I did push them on that. I want to make sure we're not putting in technology for 2025. I want it to make sure it's gonna be adaptable and will be still, you know, usable 20 years from now. Now, obviously, we don't know what's gonna happen, maybe we'll all be robots by then, but they, you know, that's what their job is. They're the experts. They gave a quite a presentation on the adaptability, the sustainability of the technology with inside the city wall, you know, with inside City Hall walls, with inside the other buildings, not just wiring, but beyond that. So, it was, it was all the infrastructure and, you know, adjacencies that would go with that as far as the technology piece. We need someone much smarter than we are as far as that piece of it, and that's what their job would be.
So, how long would they be on for that? Just until City Hall's built, or?
This one was for that, that piece of the contract. Mr. Donovan, if you want to jump on. Oh, the representatives are here, yes. Maybe they could come up, but yeah, why don't you guys come on? We'll let, we'll let the real-time guys answer. Yeah, I didn't see you guys. I didn't see you guys. Yeah, no, that'd be great. So.
If you don't mind giving your name and title, just for the record.
Yeah, good evening, Rick Erickson, I'm with Plant Moran Real Point.
Kyle Maceda with Plant Moran Technology, I'm a principal.
Yeah, and Kyle did a great job of explaining it at the committee meeting, so go ahead, Kyle.
Yes, I don't know, maybe just elaborate on all the different systems, if that was the question you're trying to get an answer to. I mean, we're starting with everything from access control, surveillance, AV, building management system. There's a bunch of different technologies baked into that contract. So, they'll start to establish some standards that'll be applied to not just City Hall, but other future buildings that will be built on the campus, to start establishing some consistency in standards, which is something that's lacking currently.
So, this'll continue on, and I guess was my, part of my question. So, when we go to do whatever, if we decide, you know, with the new police department possibly, would that extend over? We can use that same information, or you're gonna be hands-on on that as well?
Correct.
Does this contract cover that as well?
Yeah, if correct, I'm wrong. Their contract, City Hall, police, fire renovation.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, that was the original scope, and I think it was a three-year timeframe.
And may I ask, second part of my question would be, what if we change? How many times can we change? Let's say we decide on a whole different type of campus, you know, layout, if you will, or site plan. Would you still be on board, obviously, and would that cost us more money in the end, or?
Yeah, so that's where we get involved. We manage their contract and their scope of services and their budget and their fee. So, we, we will begin on any kind of engagement until we know something is solidified. So, right now, City Hall is probably the most for sure thing, so we feel comfortable proceeding or kicking off with City Hall. And then, as the other pieces are further defined and approved, then they'll engage in those pieces as well.
So, you'll let us know how to take down this building as well, right?
Big ball.
Big ball.
One big ball.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you.
And that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be the technology people, yeah, taking it down.
Exactly, thank you, and thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. Anything else, council? Anything from the audience? And we do have the motion. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheal.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero. With that, I'm going to hand the floor over to Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February 5th, Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee held a meeting. I'm not going to go through everything, because Council Vice President Tashnik did a really good job summarizing the first meeting we had before that. I think this was the 15th meeting, maybe the city council has held committee meetings on the Five Mile and Farmington sites. So, just to kind of add to what the vice president talked about at the previous meeting, Plant Moran Real Point presented a presentation before the city council on the first kind of rough renderings of what this site could potentially look like. And again, they're rendering, so those are living documents, they're going to change countless times, and they were asking the city council for feedback. This is what kind of the architects, the civil engineers, the master planners have kind of been working on. So, they brought that plan with the help of Plant Moran Real Point, which is our real estate consultant. They are kind of the connection between the city and the private development world, and they help us with all things real estate needs. And they help us on the municipal side, making sure we're on path, and then they're able to help us with the private side, the private industry, to kind of tell the private developers out there, hey, this project is, is kind of starting to, starting to speed up a little bit, and then kind of talk about the ins and outs of it all. So, Plant Moran Real Point has played an integral part in all of this. So, at the meeting, the administration presented three different options to the city council, kind of giving us, again, those rough renderings, and they talked about all sorts of different options and timelines. Something of a note, that's important to note, is that there is an option to potentially build a new library. So, a lot of that discussion was, what is council's appetite on a new library? There's costs about what the existing library is costing us right now to maintain, and conversation about a new library would cost. There was discussion about combining the library and City Hall, essentially under one roof. They'd be separate, but there's some sort of, you know, harmonious sides of things, right? We have a library and a City Hall, there's separates, there's, there's differences, but there's similarities there, the pros and cons towards that, the pros and cons of keeping the library where it's at right now and doing renovations. So, again, these are high-level discussions, but the administration and Plant Moran Real Point needs that feedback from the city council, which is why I think it's so important that we continue that dialogue and that collaborative working environment. There is going to be another meeting, and again, these are all public and open to the community. This Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting will be held March 12 at 7:00 p.m. Typically speaking, we hold them here at City Hall on the second floor in the council chambers, but after some more discussion, ironically, we had our tech people here tonight. The tech in that room is not very good. There's just one TV in there, and it's really hard to see anything of substance in there. So, we're going to be moving that meeting to the DPW, Department of Public Works Building, over there on Farmington Road, just next to the freeway. They've got TV screens everywhere and microphones everywhere, and it makes it really great for a collaborative working environment. So, if anyone from the community is interested in attending, that should be our 15th or 16th meeting now we've had on this item. They're always publicly open to the residents and to anyone in the community. So, that will again be March 12 at 7:00 p.m. at the Department of Public Works Building on Farmington, just south of the freeway. I think that pretty much sums it all. There was a number of council members there, a number of city officials there, a number of Plant Moran officials there, and then we also received an update from Ted Davis, our Parks and Recreation Director, on, again, the timeline and scope of the senior project there. Potentially, that should be done by December of this year, and that, again, that is a renovation of the city, city recreation center, and then also the brand-new senior center. So, a lot going on, and I try my best to keep it short, but also provide information. And lastly, I'll just note that, again, the city council really wants to provide as much information to, to the residents and be on record, all the stuff is available on our city website, just kind of go traverse that a little bit, and then, please, we'd love to have you attend the meetings. We want more people there and engage in the process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
I'd like to compliment the committee for the work they have done on this. I know, as Rob has said, you've met eight million times, and, and, you know, I mean, that's, that's not an easy feat to do, and it behooves all of us to try and get up there on the 12th, and including the residents of this city. I just live across Five Mile, and it definitely interests me, because I want to see what I'm going to deal with in my quality of life as things begin to change, you know? So, I mean, it's very important, particularly that people in and around City Hall in this property come out to it. And that's not excluding the north and south and middle and east and west, and everybody needs to come out and voice their opinion on it, so we get a lot of good dialogue going on, and I think that's what Rob and others are asking for, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? All right. We are now going to move on to unfinished business, starting with item number nine. This is a roll call. This is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances, as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to petition 2024-10-03-02, submitted by Andrea and Benjamin Edwards, requesting to vacate portions of an existing storm drain easement at 1-8586 Comstock.
So moved.
Yes, no, I just want, a first reading was given-
Oh, wait, first reading.
-by Council Vice President Martha Tashnik on January 27. Counsel.
I can give her, I can give a second reading in her absence, if you'd like, Mr. Chair. Okay, I'll give that second reading.
Thank you. So, we have a second read. Any items from council you'd like to speak on, on this item? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheal.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And item number nine carries six to zero. We're going to move on to item 10. Is, oh, yeah. Item 10 is a request to approve the Seven Mile and Farmington Venture, LP Plan Development Agreement between the City of Livonia and the Seven Mile slash Farmington Venture. This comes to us from David H. Johns, Showstack Brothers and Company. On behalf of the Seven Mile slash Farmington Venture, this is petition 2023-06-02-07, approved by the council on August 26, 2024. This is, sorry, I lost my train of thought. This is the planned general development, consisting of a 75,466-square-foot Meyer grocery store and a 102-unit multifamily resident, residential town home complex, located at the property 33500 West Seven Mile Road. Counsel.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an approving.
We got an approving, do we have support?
Support.
All right, support. Morgan, floor's yours.
Fairly standard, Mr. President, just a general development agreement that, that we always do on larger developments like this. So, projects already been approved. Now, our law department and planning department are working out some of the nitty-gritty legal stuff, and that's all been worked out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bazinski.
Yes, so I can appreciate the, the request. However, I can't support it. This project was just recently presented to council and approved. It's a great project, one that I'm really excited about. What we're looking at now is basically, the request is that the Meyer can be built before the townhomes get started. Our ordinance states that for projects like this, they would concurrently be developed, and 30% of the townhomes would be under, underway by the time the Meyer is finished. I think the developer went into this project and the proposal presenting it to council, understanding that those were the requirements of our city. We approved it with that understanding as well. If and when, you know, there are some dramatic changes in the global or national economy or other unique circumstances that require the developer to come forward with changes in their plans, I, I think that those are fair to consider. But I just don't think that, right now, before the project has even started, that we need to be making exceptions to the rules. Again, we just recently approved this project where, you know, it was eyes wide open of what the expectations were. So, that is just my explanation of how I will be voting on this topic.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I got Councilman Donavich, and then I'll go to Councilwoman Morgan, then Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I didn't go too deep into it, just because it's, it's a standard thing that we often do with developments. It's very standard for us to look at a mixed-use development and the realities and the logistical concerns of a development. This site, we have a big box store that's been vacant for a decade or so now, and it went through the whole city council process. They're demoing the entire Farmer Jack's, old Farmer Jack's site and the old furniture store next door, and Meyer will start the first phase of construction. We have ordinances that say that a certain percentage of the remaining mixed-use project has been completed. With that being said, there are realities of construction where you have to move equipment on the site, we have to stage certain things on the sites, they're ripping out the parking lot, they're adding underground detention. The site currently does not have underground detention, so the likelihood of it flooding is higher. So, we, as a city, not only are going to get rid of a blighted old building, we are also increasing and, and fixing the stormwater management system. We're enhancing it so that the residents next door don't have to worry about, or less, lessens the likelihood of their, of their homes and whatnot flooding, because now we're able to maintain that stormwater and actually manage it to today's engineering and environmental codes. That site currently does not have that. So, I'm excited about seeing a vacant, blighted building demoed. It's been sitting there for a decade-plus vacant. It's been an eyesore for longer than that. I'm not going to vote down a project now over, over some litigation and/or terminology here. These are standard. At another site we just approved at Six and Hagerty, we did the same exact thing. Every site is different, and you have to look at everything differently. You can't just look at it in some holistic approach that is, everything's black and white. We have to work with our developers to, to fix these vacant, blighted buildings, and again, that's not black and white. So, developer, they're longstanding developer, they've been developing for, I think, 100 years now. I'm excited for this project, writing 100 high-end townhomes to our community, really great material, really nice building, that's 100 new families that can live in our community, and we can get rid of some blight. So, I'll be in support of this, very standard development agreement we do all the time, and no need to make this bigger than it is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Councilman Bazinski regarding this. You know, there's, there's a lot of logistics to making a big plan like this to come together, and there's a lot of safety aspects that come into play when you're trying to tear down buildings, tear up parking lots, put in new drainage systems, and then build two different facilities, one of them being a grocery store and the other being townhouses. It's not going to be, we have to think of the safety aspect of that, and all that, that large project going on at one time could be very concerning. So, I think this is, this is prudent for the developer to do, is to take the time they need to make this occur, instead of trying to rush through something and making some mistakes that can be potentially dangerous for the construction workers that are out there, especially when the logistics of bringing lots of material onto the property, the property has to be sealed off. You cannot have two major projects going on at once right next to each other. It creates a huge problem. So, I just want to let you know that I am in favor of this, and I think that, I'm hoping that maybe you reconsider that, just as far as the safety aspect is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, and I'm trying to find it on my phone. Several people have tried to contact, probably most of us, about the light situation, the traffic light. So, I think that it's getting somewhat resolved with Commissioner Morecki, if I'm not mistaken. She's working on it, and usually she gets good results at the county, so, because it is a county kind of issue. So, I just wanted to mention that, for those of you that have emailed us or myself, it's being worked on, from what I understand. So, I know the city will adhere to whatever the county will help us with, and just wanted to get that on the record a little bit.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Bazinski.
Yes. So, again, I am not voting against this project. I voted for this project. I think it is a great project for the corner. I am referring to our ordinance, and so, through the chair, if I could ask some questions of our planning director. If, if there are safety concerns for how our ordinance is laid out, do you have safety concerns? I mean, is it typical that there would be concerns related to, or maybe engineering? I don't, I don't know which, but.
Well, let me just say that the agreement, as it's being presented this evening, addresses a number of issues. It has certain performance benchmarks, it has time deadlines built into it, it has penalty clause or, or a liquidated damages provision. So, all these things protect us. In addition, it has some safety issues built in relative to the demolition and what needs to occur by a certain date in order to secure the site in a safe manner. So, all of these factors have been built in, and while it does borrow language from previous agreements, and much of it is the same, it does have some other unique provisions in it, but I think that those have been really hashed over and addressed by, by the city attorney. So, if you'd like additional detail, I'm sure Carter is willing to provide some of those details.
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Fisher, could you go over those details for us?
Sure. So, as the planning director mentioned, one of the things that we have is sort of a backstop in terms of ensuring that the townhouse development also occurs in a timely fashion is the liquidated damages provision. Just establishing that we'll receive funds should they not meet certain deadlines as far as the housing construction goes. In terms of safety, we've also inserted clauses in there about how the demolition is to be conducted, the order for demolition, and then restoration of the site, particularly the townhouse site, post-demolition, to ensure that it's a safe and secure site. In terms of sort of broader questions about the, the ordinance as applied here, you are correct that, that for many projects, the ordinance would have 30% requirement for the townhouse development before completion of construction there, but the ordinance also does actually grant us the right to contract, as we have in this instance, to allow for phasing, and phasing is somewhat standard for projects of this size as well. You would, you would very frequently see one piece done, the commercial piece done, and then the, the housing piece done in this manner. So, it, it's not out, too out of the ordinary that we would, we would see this kind of thing happen.
Is there a timeline for the townhomes, just out of curiosity, with the new agreement, or not specifically?
There is a timeline for the townhomes. The, the developer or the owner of the land would have until, I believe it's July of next year to pull permits on, on the town, the building permits for the townhomes, and then until December of next year to actually begin construction on the townhomes. And from that point, we're pretty confident that they'll want to wrap up construction as quickly as possible and not sort of incur carrying costs and those sorts of things during construction. So, there is a timeline in place.
Great, thank you.
Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? If you'd like to make your way to the podium, name and address, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tim Kilroy. I live at 20148 Stamford Drive. My home is just north of the proposed Meyer project. We're excited about the project, but I did, I am the author of the note from, to city council that you received here tonight, and a lot of concerns about the traffic light. First, it's only going to be about 500 feet away from the existing functioning active traffic light at Seven Mile, and that's going to affect our daily lives, how we go to work, how we take our children to school, how we go to church, library, and if we want to go west to Hunt's Hardware, or we go to east to Bank of America and so forth, it's an additional burden on us in our travels. So, I spoke to, at three different planning commission meetings, about my concern about this traffic light, and I thought we had an agreement. I thought we had an understanding with this, we would wait for the grocery store to be in business for one year, and then we would then do an assessment as to whether or not the traffic light is really needed. Now, I believe the concern with Meyer and Shellstack is that making a left-hand turn out of their, their facility onto Farmington Road, I get that. But when I look at the traffic study, and I got it Thursday and read it over the weekend, I go to page 74, and it tells me the traffic going in and out of the McDonald's restaurant. 308 vehicles, that's about one, about one minute, or 70, excuse me, 72 seconds, that traffic light is going to be activated, and it's going to be stopping about 6,000 cars on Farmington Road in doing so. So, we need to do this very smartly and do this right. Yes, Wayne County owns Farmington Road, which is why I asked Commissioner Morecki, and she's actively involved in this, but if we vote yes, to say no, we're fine with it, let it go, we've acted, we asked, then we've-
That's time, sir. I'm sorry. I, I think Councilman Donavich has-
I'll answer questions if you're one.
Yeah, well, first, sir, I give you a lot of credit for reading a traffic study, because that's not much boring material out there than a traffic study.
Pot of coffee and a couple of napkins.
I give you credit, I give you credits. And I'm happy you brought the traffic signal, because that is something that this council took very important. We talked about it at great length, and, and I always kind of go back to a story I found out, I've been on council for a while now, and we voted on a project to have two entrances out of a certain project, and then Wayne County, or I think the state of Michigan, rather, they turned around and said, nope, you can't do that, we want something different. So, my point of telling that story is Wayne County ultimately is the authority on the road, and to your point, sir, this council did say we want one year, sort of seasoning period, let the Meyer project happen, let the development kind of run its course, and then at that time, we will kind of look at that item again and go back and make a decision there. Well, we were overruled by the county. The county has ultimate jurisdiction over, over that, Wayne County Engineering Department. Those engineers, I tell you what, they can be interesting sometimes. But not our engineer, he's Todd, Todd Zunick is an awesome guy. But they, they ultimately said, no, we want the traffic light now, and they go and they follow their standards, and there's certain state and national standards that they follow, so we, we can't do anything about it.
I disagree.
Now, I hope, once, sir, this is my time now, I appreciate it, but the time's been over with. with. We want to change that, but unfortunately, we can't do that. Now, it sounds like County Commissioner Terry Morecki is trying to do something and she's a hard worker and I hope she's able to pull something off and talk to the executive and have some conversations with the engineering department. But other than that, if they don't change her tune, we can't overrule them. It's their road, they maintain it, they do those sorts of things. So I hope something happens there, but as of now, there's nothing that this council can do about that.
Thirty seconds, please.
Right now, the time is up. You can wait if you would like until after this meeting, we have general communication or if you want to talk to us after.
It's very important. I will wait.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries six, wait, five to zero. We're dropping people. Going to new business, item number 11 is an acceptance of grant of easement. Just for a point of clarification, Mr. Fisher, can I just, do I have to read all these out painstakingly and just tell me yes and I will?
I mean, I think they're all for the same tax ID. I'll just kind of run through.
Just a general description is fine.
All right. So the first one, these are always fun and I feel that people do this because I mumble my words and it'd be funny. So acceptance of grant easement, this comes to us from the Department of Law, secured without monetary consideration from North Ridge Livonia LLC for a 20-foot wide public utility easement in connection with the sanitary sewer constructed within the Kroger D-615 Expansion Project. Counsel?
So moved. Am I moving 11 and 12 together?
No, just move 11 and I'll just touch base. We got support?
Support.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? And I just will go on record, this is more of a housekeeping issue. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries five to zero. Item number 12 is an acceptance of grant easement. This is for the same property and parcel. This is just for the water main that was constructed within the Kroger D-615 Expansion. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
Anything further? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries five to zero. Item 13 is an acceptance of grant of easement, comes to us from the Department of Law, secured without monetary consideration from AEG Livonia Propco LLC for a 20-foot wide public utility easement in connection with a sanitary sewer constructed for the Clear Path Assisted Living Project. Counsel?
Support. So moved.
Support.
I got a motion from Morgan, support from Bozinski. Counsel, do you have anything to want to add on this? Go into the audience. Audience, anything to add on this? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries five to zero. We're going to go into item number 14 is an acceptance of grant of easement. This is for the same property that 13, it was the AEG Livonia Propco. This is for the water main constructed for the Clear Path Assisted Living. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
Donovan with Morgan's support. Counsel, anything else? Audience? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries five to zero. That concludes our regular meeting agenda. I'm going to go back to the audience now and if you'd like to speak, name and address, three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Eileen McDonald, 36099 Brookview. Question, I couldn't hear very well when you were talking about the Bennett Library, Bennett Library and when the next meeting is going to be on that discussion. Can you go over that again, please?
Yes, is that, so March 12th?
Do you mind?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That's fine.
Yeah, so that next Capitol Outlet and Infrastructure Committee meeting, they're all public meetings, that will be March 12th, 7:00 PM at the DPW Building on Farmington Road, just south of Newburgh, or, excuse me, south of the freeway. Laura Toye will be out there with a sign saying, open now.
Okay. Also, and I just really found it very interesting that that proposal was something that was going to be considered, so I guess it'll be interesting.
It's very early. I just, you know.
I know.
It's very early, just lots of things are moving, so we'll keep on rocking and rolling.
Right. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. King, you just like popped out of nowhere. I've seen you walk in.
Yeah, I walked in from home and I had a couple of questions. You talked about Terry Time with Ted. When is that and where is that? You didn't say where it was.
I did. I said, it's at the senior center.
Oh, is that the senior center?
Yeah, I heard her.
Okay, I was listening at home, so. And the other thing was Laura talked, you talked about a committee of some kind for Newburgh Village. Can you please put me on that committee? I mean, can I volunteer to be on that committee?
You could, yeah, you can come in if we do a focus group.
Yeah, I mean, I'd really, really like to do that.
We gotta set a date yet, it just was approved tonight.
Yeah, okay, okay.
The minutes aren't ready.
All right, yeah, a couple of other things. I just want to talk a little bit about common sense. I know a lot of times we say how smart all these people are that work for us to get things done. The rec center, in the winter, the doors open as you go into the entry, all four doors open, blast of cold air comes through there. And that coldest week, I remember that really, really cold week, the folks working there, I think it was an, I think it was an OSHA violation. They were in gloves and coats. All winter long, there's no reason to open that front Star Trek door. We have a man door right to the side, which is, it's all compatible, it's the right size. And it's just silly how that happens. And think of the waste of energy trying to heat that place, all winter long, just blast after blast of cold air. Okay, one other thing. Rob talked about, I meant, I brought up the garbage cans and Rob pushed back a little bit saying, you know, how wonderful they were. And it was interesting, I watched Rob and not the other Rob, and I don't know, the guy from DPW reading positive emails about the garbage cans. And so I wanted to read a few. Notice that several homeowners in Madonna Estates are ignoring Livonia's ordinance regarding trash cans stored in the front of the house. What's next? Old couches, washing machines, and our old dilapidated junk around blocks out front? Not a good look unless you're interested in lower property value. This is all over Livonia. We leave off Eight Mile and Newburgh. The cans are too big for the garage and people don't want to put them on the sides. Back where they are, can't be seen and eyes are for sure. Our neighborhood looks terrible. So for every positive email, I could read three negative ones. So all I want is, you know, when I bring something up here, instead of pushback, because you have the last word, so it's not a debate, what I would like to say is, I'd like to hear from the council is, that's a concern. We'll look into it and let's see if we can't find a solution. That's all we're looking for, from anybody from council. Let's see if we can't find a solution. Last thing, YMCA closed and because the corporate offer said $5 million of improvements, okay, LAD took it over, spent less than a million dollars and they've been operating ever since. So I have to agree with your assessment of walking through the building. It's kind of like a drive-by assessment.
That's time, Mr. King. Thank you so much. It's good to see you. Hey, name and address, three minutes.
Laura Janica, 2965 Monger. Of course, I got to talk about Noble because that was like a whoof. Just a reminder that Detroit Train Station has two basements and they were able to completely mitigate that and did a pretty darn good job. I've had this question since, this is my third year trying to save Noble, and somebody mentioned frustration. It's pretty frustrating, I gotta say. But I wondered, how does one person have permission to let a building die? How? Did that happen? The building was open one day, 2019, next day it's closed and nobody knows anything about it. Citizens didn't know. There was no sign earlier, somebody mentioned, well, you put the zoning sign out there. Nobody put a zoning sign out there. Nobody put anything out there. A little tiny white sign that says this building's temporarily closed. That's, it's not, it's not right. It's not just, it's just not right. And talking about money, you know, I've been coming to council meetings for three years and I see it get approved to have an ice skating rink at Greenmade, okay? And then there's things that look like cement caskets on Middlebelt and Plymouth Road. Where does this money come from? Where does this 300 million coming from to build this? But yet we can't have a couple, even 20,000, we can't even have 20,000 to do a study on I don't know how much time I got, I could talk all night. But, you know, I've been to, I've seen the building plans. It's an amazing building. This is a quality architect. It's not a piece of junk, it's not made out of cinder blocks. This is, it's a quality building. Built for that site, built with lighting in mind, with the site in mind, we're lucky to have it. Just, I could talk all day, but I do have one more thing to say. I heard about this library city hall thing, which is to me unprecedented. I'd studied libraries, it's my new hobby, I guess. And I've never heard of this. But I heard about it at my wine store, two and a half months ago, I heard about this plan. And I mentioned it to a couple of people and they thought I was crazy. And now it's, this is the thing? And people don't know about it? This is, there's something not right here. There's something not right about how this city functions. Thank you.
Thank you. Audience communication, it's yours, three minutes.
Cindy Fleming on Woodring in Livonia. I'm going to piggyback on what Mrs. Janica just said. This is a, Noble is designed by an award-winning architect specifically for the city of Livonia. If we need funding, we have had verbal commitments from all our state and federal representatives. I'm going to say this again. We've been around this block several times. The money is there. I personally have even offered to help write federal grants and I was told no because the administration will only have commitment to the Five and Farmington location. That is not right. Noble is in the position that it is now because when Bennett was built, we were asked to pass a library millage to support Bennett. At the time, the citizens were promised that the city would maintain Noble and Sandberg Libraries out of the general fund. The millage was to run Bennett only. In 2009, the city stopped taking money out of the general fund and operated all three buildings out of the Millage 4-1. And we know what has happened to those buildings since then. They were not kept up, they were not assessed, and they have all crumbled and decayed. I knew because I used the Bennett Library that the cooler, air conditioning for the general public, didn't work since the 90s. It hasn't worked for years. And why nothing was done when parts could be bought to upgrade the system, that is shame, shame, shame on this city of Livonia. And I, as a citizen, and almost a lifelong citizen, and a volunteer, and a taxpayer, will not support a new millage for Five and Farmington when they have absolutely just turned their backs on the rest of the city. It is not fair, it is not just, and we will not stand up for it.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? All right. Oh, yeah. Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. We'll allow, yes, yes, pop up. And you even get three minutes now. So if you can figure, finish your...
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Repeating, my name is Tim Kilroy and I live at 20148 Stamford Drive. When you look at the report, this is not a trivial matter to put a new traffic signal within 500 feet of an existing signal. And they talk about using a three-phase actuated coordinated traffic signal that's going to involve the McDonald's. How is that going to work? Do they have McDonald's permission to put the activation device in their driveway? I got a call, I asked McDonald's on Friday if they knew about this and went to the store and I got a call from the supervisor, they said no. I got a call today from corporate McDonald's and they thanked me for the study and they're going to give it to their civil engineering group. They don't know anything about this at all either. So it's, how's this going to work? And the issue is basically turning left onto Farmington Road. So the right-hand turn on red is not a problem. So can we accept bias the signal so that it activates only for both those who are wanting to turn left and then turn on? I get questions like this. The main concern was during rush hour. The only two actions out of the warrants that exist are morning rush and evening rush. The rest of the warrants don't exist. So during the off-peak hours, can we have it as a flashing yellow so we can keep the traffic moving? Do we need to upgrade the light at Seven Mile so it be a smart signal? And who's going to pay for that? So we can link the two? We want to keep the traffic moving. We talked earlier about the population decline. One of the things that attracts people here is how well can I get around the city? How well can I take my family, my kids to their activities? And putting a roadblock in the way is an impediment to that. So I listed out some of my questions there. The other final part is that this study also says not making a left-hand turn from Southbound Farmington to Gable Street. So if you know anything about that area, if you don't, please drive it. But if you don't, you're basically telling the people, you can leave your home, but you can't get back because you have to then go on down through that light to Seven Mile and go get in the left-hand turn lane and go into Westmore and Shady Side because you can't turn down Gable Street anymore. And that's if you miss the street of Carlin and Haldane. So it's not a trivial matter. Now, we just know we voted yes, but we got to have Commissioner Morecki's back. Those streets, Gable and Shady Side and Westmore are city streets too. And we are Livonia, we are also Wayne County, and we need to keep our seat at the table so that we can say, hey, this is how the light's going to function and we're going to treat it as a system. As an automotive engineer, you put two parts together, now you have a system. You have two lights together, it's a system. How's it going to work? So now you just voted yes to approve this, but how, I'm asking council, how can we maintain our seat at the table to make sure that this is a good thing that's happening and it's done properly? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr.?
Yes.
We may officially want to, you know, just go on record or write Commissioner Morecki and thank her for her efforts so far?
Yes.
And see perhaps when that's going to come through because as my learned council member next to me here said, because of all the federal and different county restrictions that we're under, we, in state for that matter, we may want to just officially send her a note or some kind of letter from us, the mayor, I don't know.
If I may, I spoke with Commissioner Morecki earlier today, a couple of days ago, about this specific issue too. And at least for me, and I'm sure I could speak for my colleagues, we'll stick with this to ensure that we get what's right for our Livonia residents. It's one of those tricky things that, it is Wayne County's, it's like easements and utilities, that's even for the McDonald's because you know that easement is probably not their property, it's probably the right-of-way that would be, would have that mechanism in there, but...
That they have to maintain.
Yes. Yeah, oh, yeah, the right-of-way they'd have, they'd have to maintain, obviously, you know, I still remember lawn cutting, stuff like that. But with that easement being in place, they've got it. But no, just rest assured that, you know, Commissioner Morecki, she's got it, we'll assist, we'll make sure that time comes. You have all our numbers, you know how to communicate with us. As that process goes, we'll make sure that we keep you in the loop and I know you'll be in the loop and if we have to...
Well, not necessarily, and that's what I'm finding out, is that there is not good communication to the people who live north of the project.
Yeah.
Including the McDonald's, Deerfield Woods condominiums.
I'll speak for council, we'll stay in touch with you. We've got Sarah, who's our office manager here.
Well, I also helped and assisted with the City of Livonia Traffic.
Absolutely.